And we do have a quorum. Mrs. Cohn is not here, but four other members are here. We have no cases, so I'm not going to take in -- we have any sworn statements that we have to take here.
He can lie?
He can lie. We just said that on the TV. But don't believe everything you hear on TV. Okay, we have no cases. We have a communication. And why do you have a star next, an asterisk next to your name, Lance?
It may not be your last.
It says, "We're going to have an update on University Estates."
How many stars?
One. But that's the one thing. Communication, and we also have a communication which we'll go into when we go into our work session from Joe Shields about lights on those signs that we talked about. Do you wish to start now, please?
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to make a presentation. What I want to do today is just bring you up to date on what we're getting ready to come to you with, so that any questions you have, I can work on between now and 17th of May, when I'll come back with the final presentation. I have handouts of all the maps and stuff, so if it doesn't come up clearly after the presentation, you know, I can bring this stuff up if you want to see something closer. The purpose is, as I said, to come before you, so we can make this thing easier when we come back to you for the final. The land development at the present time, our engineers are completing the necessary design work for submission to Ray and Burgess and Naples for the earthwork on Grand Vista Village. The High Point, the Villas at High Point Village Phase Two, and the first two cul-de-sacs of what we'll call on University Estates Phase Two Residential. Grand Vista Village is going to be the first project I bring to you to get the final approval. It's also our intent to do a little cleanup work on lots one and two, which are the front two lots on our project that we got stalled when winter came, and we want to kind of dress those up. Part of that was AEP out of suspended telephone pole that we couldn't move at the time we were working, so we want to clean that up. This is just our site plan. I put this in here if we need to refer to it for any reason. The three areas that we're going to talk about today are the, this is Grand Vista Village, this is High Point Village, which Phase Two starts right there and goes out that cul-de-sac. And then these are the next residential areas. This will be part of Phase Two. Grand Vista Village is going to be a 72-unit gated luxury three-story townhouse community, which is on Lot Two. We'll probably build it, we'll start in with 10 four-unit buildings and the clubhouse, and then progress as sales go. I think it'd be prudent, since it's all the same area, that we get the approval for the whole thing when we come through. These are going to be exceptionally quality units, and with an optional individual elevator in each unit. They will have rear-entry garages on the basement level, and then around front on the main street entrance, that's where your front door to your main floor will be. We plan to gate this at both the southern entrance and the northern entrance, and like I say, have it a gated community. We're planning on a very nice, deluxe, and well-appointed clubhouse with a pool and deck and courtyards. One thing about Lot Two is that as you stretch from the southern end, which is back to Lot One, which is where the Dr. Connors' house is, that's a gradual slope all the way back to his house from the start of this. So it's our plan to come in and just kind of, not, I don't want to say stair steps, right, we're just kind of go with the terrain, you know. So it'll be actually three heights of the project, but there won't be the mass grading or anything. I think Pat was around, what, 14 to 15, 15, 5 is the most we cut off at any one spot. And actually, when you look at it, there's just a hill, a point that comes up right in the middle of Lot Two, so that's where most of that dirt has to come off of. The rest of it is pretty close to grade. This area was stripped of most of the vegetation by the previous owners, so we plan on doing extensive landscaping along with some beautiful non-intrusive lighting to complement this development. This is probably the one development you're going to be able to see the best from Athens, so we want to make sure that we do this part of it very nice. John Valentour is our architect who designed Grand Vista Village, and John Passine, Passine Engineering in Columbus is our engineer. And we anticipate the Ron White of University Estates Construction Services and our local subcontractors will build these units. We have probably on and off about 115 to 120 different contractors, and to my knowledge, every one of them is local, so we're proud of that fact. Needless to say, there's a spectacular view of Athens and OU. We project a mid-May submittal on this for the final. As far as variances go, if needed, we'll probably be identifying as we plan and have some more conversations with Steve and Ray in the next three weeks as we're putting this plan together. We feel this gated community will be a beautiful addition to Athens, as well as other features in the project of this size and scope. It is anticipated the internal roads of this project will be privately built, owned, and maintained, but will be built to the same standards that Altamont Drive was built. That's where High Point Village is. If you look at Grand Vista, when you're coming in from 682 right here at the entrance, you'll come up, there'll be a gated entry right here, and a gated entry down here. That general slope that I was telling you about just kind of follows this up to here. This is where Dr. Connors' house is now. This is where my sales office is, down here on Lot One. The thing about right in here, just looking at the topo, is where that little mound comes up that I was telling you about. That's where most of the earthwork will be. The rest of this will be just cutting down to, you know, the surface and spreading out. When you come in, there'll be a turnaround here. Here's your clubhouse area. What's the easiest way to show you? If you come in and you own one of these, you would drive in this way and come in and go in your garage. And like I said, there's an elevator that would take you up to the three stories. If someone comes to visit you, or you want to use your front door, there'll be a sidewalk there, and you come right into your main level of your apartment, or condo. This is a side facing the city, so from, you know, 682 when it goes on route there, this is what you're looking at. We've got a fairly good landscaping plan put together, which I'll show you in a second. We're a little lary on, you know, exactly what we want to do here until we get a little farther on, because we want to make sure that, you know, that that side really looks good.
Lance, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
If you showed the entrance to the units for visitors, but how wide are the streets going to be? Is there going to be visitor-on-street parking, or what will?
We're going to have a little pull-off areas. See the parking here and here? And, but there's one schedule for down right in here. I don't, can't tell if that's what it is drawn there or not. But the streets will be same width as Altamont Drive, which are 24?
Yes, 24.
24 feet, which is city code curves and everything. We took that into consideration, Peg, simply because if you're coming to visit someone here, you're probably not going to feel comfortable going around and parking in the back.
Right.
So we've taken into consideration that, so that... The two phases, I mentioned 10 units and the clubhouse. We'll probably split it down the line and do this part, and then as sales go, we'll keep on going this way. I know these are hard to see, because I had to copy them off these blue things, but there's a unit right there. On the outside, you'll have your living room and your master bedroom on your main, what I will call the first floor. The center ones will have your living room and a small guest bedroom, and their master bedroom is up on the second floor. Same way here is, you know, living room, master bedroom. Then the three elevators come up, and also there's steps, you know, for each one. These will all be brick-faced townhouses, very, very appealing. The second floor shows you, on the, the one that has the master bedroom downstairs, your two additional guest bedrooms are up here, and then, you know, your bathroom and your elevator and all that. These are little porches. Actually, there should be a line through here, because these two share this porch, and a porch here. Kind of a walkout type thing. This one's really hard to see, but this is the entrance of the garages, right here. This is all your heating and washer and dryer and stuff like that, with an elevator. And then this is just a bonus room. If somebody wants to finish it into a family room, they can, or they might want to keep it for storage. Anybody got any questions so far on the layout or anything?
Is the garage, are they above ground or down?
Actually, they're below ground.
The ones that?
Yeah. So if you, if I come, you come to visit, you're coming up here and you park, and you're going in the first floor. If you're coming home as the owner, you drive around back and come into the garage like that. And this picture, I'll show you. Maybe I should just take this over here now. You can get this one to go in there. You see the front of it here? That's where you enter the doors. If you drive around back, you'd be coming in at this level.
Are most of those single-car?
Double-car, all in two cars. This is the landscaping part of it, and I apologize, this thing actually needs to be looked at in the mirror, because I couldn't get it to switch around. But when you come in, Grand Vista Village is actually right here, so this thing needs to flip over. But it gives you an idea, on the UE side, you know, we're going to have plenty of trees along with our other normal landscaping on the University Estates Boulevard. This area here, we've got a lot of shrubs and trees planted in between the buildings and stuff, but we'll end up with a bank here. And we're still in the planning stages on this. What we're going to do on this side is there'll be a retaining wall come all the way down through here, and then we'll have a waterfall out of rocks and everything coming down the entryway. So that's how we'll separate that side. I'm sure we'll have to have some type of retaining wall, or pretty good slopes coming out the back of that, just for safety's sake and nothing else. So hopefully, by the time I come to the Shade Tree Commission, we'll have some people help us with getting a better, because like I said, that's a side of faces the city. In terms of streetlights and everything, one of our ideas right now is, on University Estates Boulevard, everybody has a mailbox with a light that has to stay burning. We're convinced maybe that if we do something similar in height all the way through there, that that might light that area up, you know, very good for pedestrian, walking, and enjoying the evening and everything, versus putting full-size streetlights up there. Because that was our one concern, is, you know, we don't want that to show from Athens. So that's what we've got our engineers working on now. And these could be displaced, you know, just kind of like the bike path down here, the bollards that they have, except maybe have them a little taller, above height, head The Villas at High Point Village Phase Two, that's the retirement condos. We anticipate those are going to be a basic extension of the Phase One design and appearance. We're doing some studies now to see about a bonus room above the garages. There's been, we toured Mid Ohio Development, which we bought these plans from, and they've had good success with where they have their garages, having the steps immediately as you walk in and go up, and then above the garage, have a nice big bonus room. And we've kind of found that people buying these type condos will take that downstairs bedroom, make that their office and computer room, but then when their kids come to visit and everything, it's nice to have that upper area there where they can put beds and stuff like that. Probably not something that they're going to use every day because of the steps. Engineering is underway for the land development plan will be submitted, so that earthwork can begin. Final submittals are on track, and we will most likely follow the Grand Vista submittal as the first one. The clubhouse in Phase One is complete. We're expanding the landscaping and paving the parking lot. We're getting quotes on the pool, because we want to try to get that in pretty good, pretty quick. Just to update you on that, Phase One stops right here. This is Phase Two, right here, and that'll be one of the next things we're coming to you after Grand Vista. The residential part, these are going to be mid-range, single-family area just west of the water tower. It'll feature two cul-de-sacs consisting of 70 by 150-foot lots. A lot of our studies have shown that we need another price range, and that 175 to 225 range are in great demand in the Athens area. We'll continue the same streets, utility lighting plan that we have in Phase One. Obviously, the engineering for land development and stuff will have to be done, presented to Ray and Burgess and Naples, with construction scheduled for mid to late summer, as soon as we can get through the process. I put in here the detailed sanitary and water and storm plan will be presented to the EPA, which we have to do, and in addition to any other subdivision information that we are required by the city code. A lot of this is fairly easy, because the initial sanitary and water plan is already mapped out, so this is just taking that and hooking on to the main system. So one of the things about Phase Two here is, we're going to have an intersection at the University Estates Boulevard and Broadmore Court. Will feature a very attractive roundabout circle with decorative centerpiece. This very strategic intersection differentiates the end of Phase One, initiation of Phase Two of University Estates, and will also lead off toward the Convention and Lodging Center. And this is the, these are the two cul-de-sacs, and you certainly can't see the roundabout, but what that is, is what I was talking about there. When you come up through, you just make the, make a dip and go on, or you can go around it and go out through to that area, or come up to the clubhouse area. One of the things that we'll need to talk with Ray and his staff about is, to my knowledge, I'm not sure you have a roundabout in Athens, so we want to make sure we get with Ray and Andy to, and Bob Chalksall and all that, so that when we just, we've got fire trucks and everything else, have to be able to negotiate that.
Yeah. Yeah, Andy's been doing a lot of investigation into roundabouts in the last, oh, three, four months, so.
Good.
It's kind of timely.
I should probably have my engineer just call him right now, before we get too much further along than that. One of the last things, and it's down the road, probably after things I've been talking about, is, on the front where the sales offices are, we're doing our preliminary planning for a strip shopping center in the front of University Estates on Lot One, where my sales office is now, has begun. I'm showing you today as a preliminary design by John Valentour, our architect, and again, I have to refer to our plans later if you want to see it. But actually, here's Armidge Road, here's 682. This is what the front of the building will look like, and then on the same level, we'll have a little small banking center right there. The parking will be in the middle, and then the building will sit right like this. When we talk about shopping center, it's a pretty broad word, so I don't want to confuse anybody. We're not thinking of convenience stores or stuff like that. One of our first visions was that there's a lot of space for these shops in Athens, you know, that could come in there, in addition to maybe a tax professional or something like that. We're even looking at maybe putting one or two-bedroom apartment above it, just so like an artist wanted to open a shop there, where then he could have his residence above it, and be in a price range that he could afford to operate that business there. So that's kind of, just in a nutshell. This level of this project is the same level as where my trailer is now. We won't be going down any farther. We do have to go back a little bit, because we haven't finished stair stepping that hillside back there. We've got to secure that for the safety, no other reason. Here's some of the kind of questions I had. The gated community with the private roads and everything, I think, again, is something that we want to quickly talk with Ray and Andy and everything about, to make sure that as we design that, we take into consideration the safety of the police and the fire department and all that. The roundabout I just mentioned, as we continue UE Boulevard, we want, probably going to apply for approval to keep the bike path instead of the sidewalks. The thing that, the bike path right now is on the right, and the reason we put it on the right only is because we knew we had a lot of construction going on, and we wanted to keep everything controlled on the right side. When we put our final coat of pavement down, we will split that bike path in half, and have half of it on each side identified with a yellow line and the little reflectors that you put in the, or in the blacktop. And that gives access to both sides, so people don't have to cross the streets, kids especially, is what we're thinking. So that's an explanation of that. The landscaping plan, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, are you the one I called to get on that agenda?
Yes.
I didn't do the last one we went to, so. I will take care of that with Steve, and we'll be doing that May 3rd. When I was reading through the regulations, one of the questions I had is, how much of the total UE project information do I need to submit for this final PUD for the Grand Vista? And since we've already covered the overall site plan, we know where the water's coming from, and is all that stuff need to be, you don't need to do all that again, just the stuff as it relates to?
It looks to me like you've got three different submissions here.
Right, yeah.
Grand Vista PUD, the PUD at?
Phase Two.
Phase Two, and then you've got a subdivision for the new residential lots.
New residential.
And each one will just really be contained to that lot.
Right.
Or lots, in the case of the subdivision.
And the water plans and stuff is just basically for that onsite?
From that.
You understand it ties right into the regulations.
Right, because those have already been approved on University Estates and everything else, and so we don't need to re-review those at all.
Okay. One thing, Mayor, and then probably you and I will have to meet again on this, the settlement agrees, agreement calls for us to have a submittal by May 15th. I think, in all fairness, we looked at a calendar during this negotiation.
Sure.
And thought Thursday, the 17th, was your meeting, so, you know, I don't want to be in violation of the agreement already, but that's something we need to clear out.
Right, and that's probably the best way to do that, just to get into the habit of it, is just write a letter saying, asking to move that date, that established in the settlement agreement to such and such, then I can confirm it, and writing back to you to that date, then everybody's got a copy of the original settlement and what has transferred. Because I think we'll be adding to that file as these different PUDs get approved.
Right, okay.
You have to document it.
My main concern was the settlement agreement.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think I'll worry about it in two days.
What our engineers are doing now is, we're finishing up some work for Ray on Phase One of the Villas. We're in the middle of the Grand Vista, so as I get that stuff, I will bring it to him. One problem that I'm going to ask for your help and cooperation in is, there's one part of the soil stability study that Birt, or PSI is doing, that I'm not sure they can get to you by the 15th. I can have the whole erosion control and the land development, the hillside and everything, but the soil slope stability study is really going to be pushing to get it by the 15th. So I'm going to present the whole program to you minus that, and with the hope that we could go ahead and approve it pending, you know, the soil sample report. And Pat, we don't really, would it be safe to say we're probably two weeks behind that May 15th? Two to three, two to three weeks. Part of that is, we've had rain, and these drilling rig companies are scheduled, and they don't care who you are, I mean, you can talk all you want, they're not going to move you up in their schedule. But anyways, I wanted to let you know that, and see if that might be something that'd be agreeable to you.
Put that in the same, put that in the same memo.
Same memo. And that should be to the mayor or the planning commission?
Probably to.
Copy both, I guess would be the easiest.
To do both, no, because the planning commission's not involved with the settlement agreement.
Okay.
The city is, and I've been authorized by council to administer that.
Okay. And the last thing I had on here was, you know, in the next two or three weeks, I would be tickled to death to give anyone a tour that would like to come out and see what we've done, and I, we can walk or drive through the areas that we're talking about here, so you'll have a better understanding of what we're doing. I just put this together as kind of the final submittal. We've already done the preliminary package, which is 2109.12, all those things, which Item D, by the way, is the land development section of that, which answers a lot of the overall questions. And then if I understand the book right, these are the four, three things we need to do, is 2109-18, which is basically your PUD application, 2110 is the hillside, and 27 is your land development. The other section was the flood regulations, which do not apply, I was going to hillside. The other thing is the zoning, we've already done the zoning, so. And the last thing I want, a couple of... And the last thing I want, a couple of things I want to say is, communication has been excellent between Ray and his staff, and Ray, I appreciate all your people in the last month. We've, you know, I thought we've made real good progress, and you and I both talked at maybe bi-weekly meetings, at least with you, before you go to staff meeting, might be beneficial, and anytime if you want me to come to staff meeting, I'm more than welcome with Brian, Pat, or, you know, so we can just try to keep the communication lines open. Pat and Ron White or myself are open all the time, and now I'm done talking, so what questions do you have?
I have one. I would like to come and visit, but next week I'm going to Florida, so I can't.
Oh.
Well, you went to Hawaii.
Well, you can come the week after.
But I have a question. I was going along what my son used to call the windy highway over there, across the river along the ridges there, and that highway. What can I see, I was going towards Whites Mill, what, on top of that, what do I see up there?
You see, the building you see, kind of sitting all by itself.
Yeah.
Is the clubhouse for the villas. Let me, let me get back to that.
Well, I could see it by.
It's pretty windy. Nice view.
It's the one on the top, and then to the right, I could see.
What you're seeing is this building right here.
That building there. Well, if you, to the right, when I, before that, to the right, I could see, it looked like houses or something among the trees.
You might be able to see the corner of this condominium.
In there.
Yeah, and then.
Well, the tree, the trees are.
Right now, the trees are out, you can see the roofs of a couple of these.
Yeah, I could see some, I was seeing roofs, I saw the one all by itself, and then it looked back into trees and everything.
Yeah, this one's kind of, there's no trees or landscaping around this clubhouse. And I think the only thing, when I looked the other day, was the corner of this building, and then there's three or four houses right here.
Those are the houses you see right there?
See from the road.
I could see them from, of course, I was driving pretty fast and not.
You were.
Yes.
Oh, you're making notes of that.
Well, you better explain.
I always speed, don't tell anybody to watch that, I usually speed, but, you know, you can't, there are cars behind me, and I couldn't poke along there, but, that's all I wanted to know, that's all. But I will call and make arrangements to come out and see.
Right there's the clubhouse that you're shooting at.
Because right now, as I recall, I was up there maybe a week or so ago, you've got two buildings completed. One looks like it's almost ready to be complete.
Buildings, Building 2 is done, there's people living in it.
Right.
Buildings 1 and 3 are completed, other than trim and a.
Yeah, I thought 3 needed just a little bit.
Trim and 3, I think, did, isn't it?
And you're working on another one, and then you've got a foundation on another one.
Building 4, the foundation, has been poured and ready to go.
Yeah, there's a nice view from there.
Yeah.
It's not very nice when looking at the clubhouse, though, it's all there by itself, and it's getting a couple of empty hills.
Well, that's unfortunate.
It's going to be kind of by itself.
Well, it needs something around it.
Because it's got its own parking lot.
Trees, trees, it needs trees. I don't have, did anybody else have any questions?
No.
Just one small thing. I noticed you have two different spellings for Burgess and Nyepel. Which one do you want to use?
I didn't claim to be an expert type.
Well, as an engineer, you know, I know that's horrible.
I guess, Harry, if that's the only thing, that, my problem with that and Joanne speeding, I don't want her speeding out there.
I think it's one D.
Is it?
Yep.
Do you have, and this is not on those other two, but when you get to Phase 2, you're going to have a construction road so that you don't disturb the first 10 or so buildings?
Yeah.
Which is, is going to hook in around where that clubhouse is, I thought. Not that far from it, is it?
Which, you're talking about the, for the?
Temporary.
Well, I was also curious on the, on Grand Vista 2, as to.
Okay.
As you sell those luxuries there, how much, how much construction traffic do you want through it?
All the construction traffic is supposed to come up right up through here now.
Right.
The first road that you talked about, Mayor, is that road right through there, that Pat's?
It's going to be a temporary.
Temporary, that he's getting ready to do right now.
Okay.
Pat, I'm not sure how you, on Grand Vista.
We'll be bringing, we'll be bringing the.
Bring it up this way?
Construction traffic in on the first entrance right there to keep as much traffic off that boulevard as we can.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
And when we get back to here, Mayor, I forget if this is, is this the ridge top? The kind of land itself that we've studied about bringing a whole road up through there at some point, or is it? Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of an old logging road that goes right through there now, so, once we get back into here, then we're going to switch everything back, to come in back there.
How many lots are you talking about, really, in that second residential subdivision?
I believe there's 46 lots. That's actually, this is actually pretty much been cleared, and it's just a flat ridge top right there. Shouldn't that take a lot of work to make that go in?
Right. Now, I was just curious as to, you said the elevators were optional.
Right.
Based on probably pre-sales, I guess. Are you going to put them in unless somebody said?
If, if.
Somebody's presold.
If we build them ourselves, we will put them in. Because at the last quote we had, they were only like $10,000 or $11,000, and we just think that if someone chooses not to do it, it's going to be that much harder for them to resell to the next, you know, because. These are small, you know.
Right.
Residential elevators.
Once the unit is sold, and has an elevator in it, so, and something goes wrong with the elevator, who fixes it?
Actually, they'll be responsible to, I'm sure there'll be a warranty period and all that, but it's like some of the other things we've put in on the grinder pumps for the septic tanks and stuff. We've got an agreement with the people we buy them from, that there's a service agreement that goes with it, and.
So they'll be able to find somebody to service it?
Right. We'll make that part of our agreement when we buy them.
Now, is Grand Vista going to be condominium?
Condominiums, yeah. Four units.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you very much.
All righty. I can wait a week for you to come back.
Okay, we're all going to come together. We'll have a party, right?
Yeah.
In the clubhouse, we're going to the clubhouse for a party.
You can have one of your planning conversations out at the clubhouse.
I had the mayor cast on another communication from Joe Shields about Mike, so when we get to work session, we can talk about it. I keep hearing an echo.
Sort of yes.
I thought at first I was losing it, now I know. But I'm not. Why are we hearing an echo?
From the TV.
But we, they didn't do it last time. Does it always echo?
No.
Well, they need to get a new TV that doesn't echo in here. Will that do it?
Yeah.
He's fixing it now. Thank you, okay. All right, do we have a citizen who wishes to speak?
Steve has.
Steve always wants to speak.
Steve has a few things.
Steve has some things, okay. Well, you can be either communications or announcements in other business. Do you want to be announcements in other busi? You can be announcements in other business.
You can start.
You can start, I don't care.
I'm Steve, City Attorney Administrator and Director of Public Utilities. To be here to ask about, guide you with a copy of the ordinance that changed the ball control schedule for building height in the B2D zone, which council requested in association with your recommendation to rezone the north block of Court Street, or the third block of Court. So let's just copy the ordinance. What I did on the next sheet is I copied the existing ball control chart, so you can, I circled the part that gets changed. And would want you to notice, to just notice too, that the only difference between, now between the B2D and the B3 is an additional five feet in height is allowed, and an additional one-half story in height. So that's the only difference now in height restrictions, comparing B2D to the B3 district. That has now been changed. And even though this doesn't say final reading on these, this is exactly what the council would have asked. This is something I didn't know anyone was working on, but evidently they were, and that is, changes to preliminary application for a subdivision, that's Section 210309D, and then definition, what it did was, it added, looks to me like what it did was it added condominium clarification to the subdivision section, and then actually changed the definition. What I did with this too was, I attached for you the existing code, like the second page shows where that number nine will be inserted. And the third page is just the existing definition of a condominium that will, this will substitute for that. So those are the two latest things, ordinance-wise, from City Council.
He's been busy, look at, he's got more papers to get us.
Well, I just wanted to give you the, that's where you got your stuff up to date, is because you've.
Yeah, and the.
What you have is a proposed subdivision of land that's just within the three-mile jurisdiction of the city. It's in Canaan Township, Section 18. I brought this up to Regional Planning Commission last Thursday, but what's occurring now is, people want to subdivide land, but they don't necessarily want to go through the entire soil science submittals and sewage disposal design, that's now required by the new health regulations. In this particular case, if you look at the large map there, or turn to the second page, there's about a 90-acre parcel that's being proposed to be split into one that's about 15 that the owner will retain, and then two pieces that are around 35 acres each. The next page is actually a copy of a soil type overlay map that Chuck Hammer did at the County Health Department. And if you look down on the bottom in his notes, he says, "There's insufficient information presented at the time for, at this time for Health Department review or approval. No public sewer syst, sewage system is available." In speaking with Bob Eichenberg, the county planner, he tells me that state law allows for the subdivision of land greater than five acres in area to be directly submitted to the county recorder, and that it can be recorded without any other approvals. Administering the subdivision regs for the planning commission in the city, I don't, I haven't allowed that, and I think I've mentioned that to you before. I always want to see some notation from the Health Department. In this case, even if it's, no system has been approved, recommended, proposed. Basically, it's someone from Columbus that wants a, wants to own 35 acres in southeast Ohio, come down and camp, birdwatch, enjoy the woods. At this time, though, they have no intent to build a house, at this time, or to require any sewage disposal system. A lot of this, I believe, is driven by the new requirements of the Health Department, because they actually want you to submit information to them. They don't, they're not designing systems for you now, you propose something, and it includes a soil study. I guess the question that I have is, should these approvals be held up right now, until a system is designed and proposed, even if it's not intended to be installed? Or can these simply be approved as non-buildable sites, or sites for which construction cannot occur until a sewage disposal permit is obtained from the city county, from the County Health Department?
Would that notation be recorded when the subdivision was filed?
A lot of times, there are additional notations that are put on the approval sheets that go over to the recorder's office and the auditor. And I think that's a good idea, that if it, if these were approved without sewage disposal approval, that it be required that a notation be made on the deed.
Yeah.
So the next person who comes along doesn't think when a title search occurs or a transfer occurs, they don't think that they can, the next guy can run out and build his house.
Right.
You can see an example of that right now out on Columbus Road. Someone, I mean, that was almost right in town, but not in the corporation limit, someone built a very, looks like a very nice, large home, without checking first to see how they would obtain water and sewer.
And how are they obtaining it?
I'm not sure that's running through council right now as an annexation proposal.
Well, even if it's annexed, how are they going to obtain it? Is there a water line, or?
They'll have to come down to meet, or the city utilities.
Yeah.
Utilities won't be extended to them, they'll have to come to the existing utility.
Yeah, they'll have to basically run a six-inch water line and put a fire hydrant out there.
But I don't know what the pressure is yet.
Now, are they asking for this site to be split into these two sites plus their residual?
That's correct.
And their residual site is all right?
Yes. Yeah, it has, it has a home on it, functioning sewage disposal system. They essentially just want to take 60 acres that is separated by Dutch Creek Road, I believe, yes, Dutch Creek Road, sell it off into essentially two 35-acre parcels that at this time are not intended to be developed.
That's really unusual, if there'd be somebody that would want two, there would be two somebodies who would want 35 acres to come and birdwatch on.
Or whatever it is they intend to do. They don't intend to build.
Uh huh.
So with your permission, I'd, I'll recommend and then get signatures afterwards, that there be a notation in the deed that these are not considered building sites, unless you want to handle it a different way.
Well, I think you could say building sites, but I think we have to even be more specific, and it has no sewage disposal, because somebody could even, if you're saying they want to camp, well, if you do, I mean, it's camping without any sewage disposal stuff. Yeah, or if you even want to.
Put a trailer.
Build a little pavilion, or picnic shelter areas, or cookout, or other things, or still, there's no water, there's no sewer, and there's no public utilities anywhere on that property that I know of. Now, maybe they can get water, I don't know.
It's not only that there are no public utilities, but there may not be any site that's even suitable for a septic tank.
Right. Yeah, the contours look pretty steep.
Yeah.
It has to be in, it has to be in the deed in such a way that it's going to immediately jump out when somebody is trying to purchase it. That's, I'd feel sorry for somebody who purchased it and thought, aha, down the line, I can divide it into some house lots.
Well, might it say something like, "The Health Department is not determined if this site's suitable for a septic system"?
I think what you're saying is, rather than make the emphasis on construction, make the emphasis on sewage.
Yeah, one. Yeah, what, or can you even put something in about building is contingent upon approval by the health department? Because at some later date, the health department may give them approval for some sort of.
Because right now, the health department is the only real thing that is there to issue something that allows you to build a house. Because if you build a house and you're on a sewage system, you're out of luck.
You have a problem.
Outside of town, there are no, there are restrictions or regulations. At the regional planning commission meeting, Chuck Hammer was there and he did comment that he believed that way up on top of the hill here, there could be a site that you could build on. And somewhere in the future, someone might want to build. There's some houses that are built actually in the city that I would never have imagined anyone could get there. But they had the wherewithal to put their own long private driveway in and get to the site. So that could occur sometime in the future.
So, well, if you tie it to health department approval for, for building, then that is probably the fairest way to do it.
And in any case, even if somebody owns 35 acres right now and they start to build without a sewage disposal permit, that's a separate regulation that they would be violating. So, but at least this way, when the land transfers, someone will know that if you own 35 acres now with no notation like that, you may not know the difference.
Yeah, because if you look at the contours, any pollution or slippage or anything that occurs on that land is going to go right down into that creek.
That's the third item that I have. What I've provided you with was the agenda and the minutes from the March 1st, 2007 meeting of the planning commission where Mr. Mark Spezza made a presentation concerning this particular property. In particular, on page three of the minutes, Mr. Spezza was advised to submit all the required, required documents that would concern a minor subdivision of land. And the very last page, section 210304E are those items that need to be submitted. The only thing, and I just wanted to bring you up to date on this, what I'd received already. The only thing that I have that's required off that list right now is that survey. I informed Mr. Spezza when he dropped that off at the office that even though he's indicated an access easement for people to go across the front and share a private road, he did not submit any maintenance information. How would the road be developed? Who would share in the maintenance? Who would decide when maintenance was required? Who would remove snow? Those kinds of things. So he needs to provide that in addition. I also told him that he did not have any notations, information, documentation on sewage disposal. And I told him to get with Nick Carr, our director of water and sewer. I talked to Nick and he said there's no sewer available right out at the street. You would, there's a manhole across the street that each of these could pump sewage to. That would be one option. He didn't want to get in a situation where you had a common private pump station. So there, there are some other things that have to be considered before approval for sewage disposal would be to pump it across the street, across the state street.
They have to go under the street to get to it, right?
In a lot of cases, for example, the highway patrol coming back the other way did bore underneath 5032 to get their sewage over to a lift station that's out by the motel. The manhole, I believe that Nick was talking about will be the one that Beaumont Green will pump back to. An alternative is to get an easement across the property next door owned by Holzer docks. And then McBee's also to get back to the lift station that's back there. So that's a second alternative. So I guess what I'm saying is we have one part of several that are required. We have a survey, but we have no, no approval for sewage disposal and we still need some kind of maintenance agreement if this is the configuration proposed.
And this easement across all the properties is, is going to, in effect, be an access road, right?
Right.
Well, I haven't seen the description.
It would have to be.
It would have to be, yes.
Using the existing, using the existing access to East State Street?
My understanding is that this will all come off the single existing access point. There will be no, in this configuration, there's no request for additional opening permits to access the street. Three of the lots which front on the limited access highway could only be approved by ODOT anyway. And that's highly unlikely. So that's just kind of an update on that one. Some information here that Melissa just handed me. Same thing on the other side of the highway. This is over where Holzer Clinic proposes to be scrapped.
This is on the other side of the highway? I thought Holzer Clinic.
Same side, same side of, other side of.
Other side of 5032.
The rest of the limited access right here.
Same situation, just kind of a mirror image. I just started corresponding with Sierra Meek who works at Mike Nolan's Law Firm up in Nelsonville, who's handling this particular part of the development process for them. You can see a line there that's indicated as the city corporation line separating sections 28 and 22 of Canaan Township. If you can see that right there, it goes right through the middle of what's called track one. And basically that line is right in the middle of the proposed building. Discussions with Holzer are that they need to request annexation. The area that's showed as track two is actually adjacent to the three professional office buildings that are out there right now that are indicated as Hocking River Properties. Their intent here, as I understand it, is to create a lot known as track two that could be leased or sold off separately. So they want to create that. The other one indicated as track one will be the site that the hospital will actually, or the clinic will sit on. And track three is just the total residual that's left over. In this case, you can see too, that they propose extension of a dedicated existing right of way to go on out past the hospital and serve to provide access to track three. Again, you can see limited access right of way there. That's where you can't just punch through the fence and create your own access point to the highway.
So they don't have, at this point, they don't have any access point already permitted, right?
Um, you can barely see it all the way down on the left there. It's the existing cut through the fence that services the properties that are there now. When you go down and turn in.
Right at the beginning of the dedicated 90, 90 feet dedicated. Yeah, okay. Just before the 15.14.
There's a little tiny spot there.
Yeah, the two little curved lines.
Right, alright.
That's where you turn through the fence right now to go to Auto Tech or the motel or those three office buildings. Melissa just handed me, and this happened real quick, a request to subdivide this land in that manner. Just came.
And who's that, who's that request from?
This is from Michael Nolan's office from Sierra Meek.
Oh, okay.
And in this particular case, Nick Carr, director of water and sewer, has been involved in this process. He said so long as their utility plans don't change, and I don't believe that they're going to, or they're not proposed to at this time, sewage disposal is available and accessible there. The system is there and they can tap into it. Also, so that question, unlike the other project, that question has been answered. She's also provided, it looks like in here, a draft. Sorry, I didn't want to make any copies, but there's just, there's one agreements that will be common to, to all three properties. And several pages down in there, it has a very extensive description of the easement, how it can be used and not used, who will maintain it, who will clear snow, who will keep debris off of it, that kind of thing. So they have submitted information regarding construction, responsibility and maintenance.
This is going to be a, an outpatient clinic, isn't it? Or is it going to have inpatient facilities?
I think everything we've seen so far has been outpatient. Who knows if there will change use at some point.
There has been some discussion concerning track two that there might, there may be a co-locator or other service provider for radiology and imaging type services that might want to go there. So they want to, my understanding from our most recent discussions with Holzer is they want to leave that as an option where someone could actually come in, purchase their own piece of property and not have to lease.
What's going to happen to their building on Columbus Road?
They just rent that.
They just rent that?
Yeah, that building belongs to Glenn Knudsen.
Oh, okay. I guess they didn't know that.
It was just originally a small area, that building that was used for use of Holzer and then through the years they, they took the whole building over.
Matthews wasn't in there for a while.
Across the street.
The way this is configured, Steve, the track three then lies between one and two and the river. A portion of track three.
That's correct. The large area south of proposed tracks one and two is basically the floodway, the relocated floodway. And this other area on out to the east will take a lot of work for any kind of development to occur there at all. It's outside the conditional letter of map provision fill area that was approved by FEMA. Most of that's very low and trees, swampy, wet. There's a, there's a drainage ditch that drains the whole other side of the hillside across State Street that comes down through there. So basically there's very little development that could occur on track three without a lot of additional fill.
Well, they'd also have to get some permission from the Corps of Engineers, wouldn't they?
If they modify or go beyond that conditional letter of map provision that was approved by FEMA, yes, they'd have to submit new engineering studies, hydraulic, hydrology studies to indicate that there was equal conveyance through there and no adverse impact beyond what is permitted to adjacent properties. So this is a proposal for a minor subdivision. And again, that's just draft. I can correspond with her. Is there any concerns anybody might see right now on this? And again, this information was just provided just a few minutes ago. If you want to take time to look at the maintenance agreement?
I looked through, I, they do seem to hit them off off. I didn't read every word of it, but they seem to have everything in there. Doesn't it look like that to you?
Yeah, usually they're just one-page agreements and that whole agreement right there is about 10 pages. I think they covered just a little bit of everything.
Construction, insurance and help, help here from lighting. Do you not have anything else?
Yes, I do.
I see. I thought he said something else. You've been busy today. Or more than today, obviously. Too many pieces of paper. I don't know what to do here.
I took your notes from the last meeting on electronic change of the top of signs and turned them into this. And I think this is about as far as we've gotten. Maybe we can run through this and you can.
Well, this, this is Joe's.
As you requested, I send an email to Mr. Joe Shields over at the High University. And if what you're looking at is what I looked at is his response, he doesn't really know. Doesn't have much input for these type signs as they might relate to light pollution or light trespass. Because they're just a different kind of light. So that was accomplished and he did get, he did respond back. What I have here is what I think are the changes that we talked, that you discussed at the last meeting. The first one is 230313, which is the sign ordinance section. Section B, number four, what's in bold is just something that was, that was added. There was talk about the signs not moving, changing letters or images on a screen when the business was not open. And in this particular section, it talks about that it's only principally permitted in B two and B three zones and conditionally permitted in M. So I believe that's what the discussion was about. Second page is the section illumination of signs, 230313G. And section two was changed, what has a line through it's what exists and what will be eliminated, what's in bold caps is what will be added. And it says no illumination of signs in any zone during the hours where the business is not in operation, or it used to just say R3. And also the addition of the words, in addition, electronic message, message centers or other and/or display screens shall not change their message or graphic display when the business is not in operation. So it clarifies both that in all zones, it doesn't matter what type of light you're using. Let's put it this way, the light's got to go out on a non-electronic sign and electronic sign has to hold. Third page, 230313D2, there's a definition added for a structural type. And that was monument sign because I hear there was some discussion about the possibility of any sign with electronic display, either a screen or letters be a monument type. So I just took one of the definitions. What I did do was I changed in the, in the second line, I used the word and instead of or. It did say internal structural framework or integrated into landscaping. And my understanding was that landscaping or other structural features were what the commission was looking for. So I changed the word or to the word and. In other words, it's going to have to be a substantial sign that has landscaping and/or other brickwork, something other than just a sign on a pole. I did, I didn't see anything in the notes that Ms. Cohen gave me about, I know there was discussion about the maximum size. Should it be smaller, for example, on East State Street than 100 square feet? Should it be a smaller amount? And should this monument sign, if you want to have an electronic sign, it has to be a monument sign. How tall can it be? So I essentially just inserted that language but left two, two blanks there about the maximum height and the maximum face area.
We didn't decide. I think we were wearing down.
So I went ahead and, and set that up. That way we can just kind of fill in the blank there. Under design standards, number two materials was completely eliminated. Under design standards, number two materials was completely eliminated, and then I added this, this other language about electronic signs, electronic message centers and electronic display screens. It differentiates between just ones that have letters or numbers only, and then ones that have screens that display images. Also, any time that I saw the word animation in anything that I was looking at, I took that, I completely eliminated that, because we have those movement restrictions. I didn't want the word animation to appear anywhere, giving anyone the impression that animation could be permitted. Anytime I'm looking at any of these things and that word comes up, I just take it out completely.
Now, we haven't said anything, besides not saying anything about the sizes of the monument signs, we haven't said anything about the frequency with which they can change, right?
That's correct. And because you discussed, could it be 30 seconds, minute, hour, two hours? So that's something else that, that has to be decided. It can be inserted. And I've got, I've got this in a format now with the office where I can modify it real easy, and then I'll always be able to bring it back to you for your review, and you can see what exists and what the proposed changes are. It's real easy for me to change this.
Well, we didn't discuss the size or the length of time, actually, or the frequency.
Do we need to add the same exception in paragraph two that we have in paragraph, in G2 as we have in G1 under elimination of sign? Because it, if you just read it without knowing our discussion, it might read that electronic message signs have to be completely off when the business closes, even if they have the time and temperature on them.
Maybe I could clean that up a little bit to say, well, I guess what we're talking about is, are your normal internal or internal lighted sign or external lighted sign, the ones that you see now, in the past, those have had to, in an R3, turn off, okay? In other zones, they were allowed to stay on. But we had the discussion about businesses, most of them do turn their signs off. Is that something, do you want all of East State Street essentially to be dark if all the businesses are closed? So that's why I took out all R3 and put in any. I think what Ray's saying too, though, is then you say, oh, but you can have the electronic sign still on.
Maybe what you do is down in G2, you add one more sentence and say, this, this section does not apply to signs displaying time and temperature.
To that portion of the sign.
Or the portion of the sign.
Time and temperature.
Because we were talking about, for example, CVS, they could change, flip their advertising to time and temperature when they lock the door.
But they're not a monument sign.
No, they're, they're, they're ahead of all this.
But I mean, yeah.
They need somebody to chop it down a little bit.
We need also not only the height of the monument sign, but we need a width too, don't we?
Well, there was some discussion, one of the definitions had something about 120%, no more than 120% of the width to, it was a strange thing that I remember Mr. Hazlitt commented on, that really didn't see, it didn't seem workable, that definition. So I suppose just picture in your mind, how wide would you want to see these and how tall?
How about a maximum of 10 feet tall and five feet wide?
10 feet tall.
10 feet tall is big.
And five feet wide.
How tall is the one down in front of the bank?
In front of Bank One?
The bank, Stimson.
She gave us the dimensions. I think it was wider than five feet.
Well, I think it's too big. It may be.
It's not nearly as high as 10 feet.
No, and I think it's too high, really, it doesn't, it sort of detracts from the building somehow, it doesn't, it doesn't go through, but I think that the sign is overpowering for the rest of it, personally. The rest of it looks nice and all the landscaping, but that sign, and I, I have to go look at a sign, I can't visualize the size, and I have no idea what that, she gave it to us, but I didn't bring it with me. I can't remember what it said, but whatever it is, I think it's too tall.
And where, and that's where you have the definition. You could go, even five by 10 is what, 50 square feet?
50 square feet.
So then, obviously, you're going to have to be somewhere less than that, or have some kind of internal structure that the sign would be. Because right now, in a B3, you're allowed, what, 100 square feet?
On East State Street, where there's four more lanes of traffic, you're allowed up to 100. Every other B-zone is three or less lanes, where you're only allowed a maximum of 50 square feet.
Well, if you had five by 10, you'd have 50 square feet, and then if you had no more than 60% of that be a message area, you'd have, what, you'd have 30, 30 square feet of message, right? Which is plenty of message.
For that type of size, yes. I mean, I don't know what, with current design, how big those things get. They look pretty big to me.
What type sign is that?
Those electronic.
Oh, oh, you can get real big ones.
Yeah, they're huge.
Give them as large as a scoreboard.
Yeah.
We really don't need them.
But, but, but what we need to do is limit the size the monument sign can be, and then that limits the size that the screen can be, because there's only so much space on the thing. If you allow a mon, I don't know how, is there a limit to what a mon, it does, it's no longer a monument size, if it gets to pass a certain size, and then it would be something else? You know what I'm saying? Is there a limit?
Right now, all we have is freestanding sign, there's no mention of monument.
So, but we need to.
Be a luxury structure.
Yeah, if it gets bigger, so you'd have to, we really should say that a monument sign has to be a certain, can only be up to a certain size, and then a percentage of, then you have the, the infrastructure, and then you need to have, the sign is, can only be a portion of it.
Well, I think.
We're going to get it down about this big pretty soon.
It's a muddle of even more. I think you'd need all three dimensions, you need depth.
Oh, that's right, that's right, because they are.
I don't want it five feet deep and five feet wide.
They can put a bell in it, never mind.
Now, when I picture a monument sign myself.
Well, it does, but I think we have to define all three dimensions as maximums.
We can do that similarly to what a wall sign is. A wall sign has a maximum projection off the face of a building of 18 inches. That's what it says now about wall signs. So that makes sure that they don't come out like 3D on top of you. To me, a monument sign is, there are some types of signs that I think are monument signs that aren't really described in that way in the code, but for a subdivision or planned unit development, six feet maximum height to the top. Most of the signs on Columbus Road, if you go out through there, to me, those are monument type signs.
Yeah, I would say that too.
The reason those all have a certain look and consistency is because they're all in the city right-of-way, and they were reviewed and approved as revocable licenses from city council. So that's why you see the similar brick column on each side. They're no taller than six feet, the face area is pretty limited. So to me, six feet to the top or seven, six maybe, that's a monument sign, a smaller.
So maybe we've already got the dimensions, then we'll just use that.
So six would be a guideline, and then.
But what width do they have?
Well, the width then would be driven by whatever you allowed as the maximum face area. Six feet to the top, no more than 50 square feet in area, so if you divide six into 50, that's going to give you your maximum width.
Well, and it won't even be, you won't even have that maximum width available if you're going to have some sort of supporting structure that's not poles.
Right.
So that'll cut down the display area. Sounds right to me.
Or if you wanted to make it, just try to stay with the 50-foot standard, five to the top, 10 in width, you could describe it that way, maximum five feet to the top, maximum 10 feet in width, and then when somebody maxed it out, they would, it would automatically take them to the 50 square feet. That'd be another way to do it. I'm not real sure about limitations on height, you know what I'm saying? Do those, do those types of signs need to be a little higher for some reason? Because they're trying to.
Trying to keep it.
Trying to get information out for advertising, or is it better if it was lower?
Well, the dichotomy is different there, I mean, that's why we have a zoning law. Because if you are where, I mean, a lot of these anymore, because they're built-up areas, they're building, and some of their parking lots, up higher than the road surface. And I don't want the sign up on the parking lot height, basically, because that can really get huge.
You mean 10 feet above the parking lot is too much?
Well, I think so.
Well, you're, because you're going, it's.
Because if you have that slope type, I'm thinking of Taco Bell and whatever the other new restaurant is out through there, and you look at Renzelli's properties out there, I mean, probably as you get closer to the overpass, they need 10 feet of fill to bring it up to 100 feet of blood plane. So your structure and everything else is going to be sitting up pretty high if you want to put a display sign in there.
Right now, the measurement standard is top of the sign to the grade immediately adjacent to the base of the sign.
Okay, so if it's up 10 feet already, it's, it's not starting at 10 feet, it's starting at zero at that area, then you go up.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, it's a little problematic, I think, as the mayor's running out. I can go out and build a big hump. But you do have buildings that are elevated on fill to protect them.
But I like the idea that for a monument sign, you're wider than you're taller. And so if you're six feet by nine or 10, let's say you're six by 10, that gives you 60 square feet, you know, that max is 50 for sign face, so you've got to use a balance of brickwork or the internal structure or something.
Somebody show me something that's 10 feet long. How long are these? Eight?
Either five of these tiles? These are two-by-two tiles? So that lights four by two, which way you want to look at the sign? From the vent, including the light, two, four, six, so there's six feet right there. 10 feet of width would be five panels over, five, from vent to vent, and then a square up to.
See, that's too big.
That's 50 square feet.
That's too big.
Dude, man, six by 10.
That's too big. That's a big sign.
Right now, in B3, we allow 50 square foot signs.
But we're talking about a monument sign, which is, really looks different from other signs, I think.
Yeah, because it's not going to have the height that the others do.
So you don't want, if you, if you have, if it's that, if it's lower, it can't be that, you've got to bring the sides, and it can't be that long. It's got, you got, you can't be this way, you have to be sort of like that. Monument is like a monument in a cemetery. Think of a monument in a cemetery, but just take it out.
No, I don't really want.
Yeah, you really do. I mean, that's what a monument is, you know, it goes like that, and so it's, do you see, you don't see many tombstones that go like that.
Usually what will happen, though, with a monument sign too, you've got, recall that if you look at the face of the sign, when they constructed, the ground level up to some point is not going to have any information on it. So they're going, to get it up to a reasonable, say, do you get it 12 inches above the ground? They've got to take that one foot times whatever width they use and put nothing on it, because people aren't going to look at the ground to read the sign.
And we're going to have to decide things, but isn't the point to try to get the sign smaller and not be so garrish and goofy? At least that's my point. So you have to, don't make it too big. Don't give them a lot of room to work in. Let's be concise and to the point. They can put just two words instead of a whole bunch, I think.
If he's going to make it 10 feet long and.
That 10 feet's too long.
He's going to waste 10 square feet of his message.
On the bottom.
Just getting it up from the ground.
Not this way, he's just, he's doing it this way.
If you turn one of these tables on its edge.
Yeah.
This is an eight-foot table.
Okay, well, if you turn it on its edge.
Eight by.
Then it'd be eight by what?
Between three and a half. It's not, it might be four feet right in the center.
Okay, well, call him 32 square feet. And then you're going to have to take part of it off for the sides.
Okay.
And part of it off for the bottom, and you're probably going to have to take part of it off for the top.
Some of it for the top.
I think that's plenty.
And you're going to have a little message here.
Well, what I was trying to do was, Steve was saying that most of those on Columbus Road are around six feet from the ground. I don't think those look too bad. I think maybe what we should do is just.
Go look at them.
Take a look at them. All we really need to decide, I think, today is, we just going to talk about it again in two weeks?
Well, I think this is, he's done a good job here.
Well, yeah, that's why we.
And that's why.
Like I say, I've got it in a format now, we can just.
Right.
We've got it established, we just keep packing away.
So the other thing is the dimensions and the sequence is the other thing.
And the, and making sure the time and temperature are not mixed up.
You know, how you don't pay attention, I see those signs out in Columbus Road, I think, I think they're attractive, but I, I need to go out and actually go look at them.
And they're fairly uniform.
Most of them are right around 50 square feet and six feet to the top. Anything, if you get any smaller than that, especially if the speed limit's very great, you just, you lose the ability even to comprehend what's on the sign.
But the other difference with Columbus Road is that is a very wide right-of-way.
140 feet in some locations.
Right, and so you're away from the street, whereas like, if we're looking at our B3 on Stimson Avenue.
Yeah, they're right on top of them.
See, the B2 and Richland Avenue wouldn't permit these, right?
No, it's, they're permitted in B2 zones.
Okay, B2, so, okay, so Richland, which.
You're right, on top of the road.
Is it 33 feet wide street, plus sidewalks? There are much more right-of-way there.
Richland Avenue and East State Street, these signs could probably come right up almost to the sidewalk, within a foot or two of the sidewalk.
We're at the right-of-way pretty much on that one.
Well.
So we have to take that a little bit of it, so maybe we want them smaller than the 50s around on Columbus Road because of the distance closer.
Are there a couple of signs out there on Richland, around there by the church company along in there, or a fireplace, or some monument signs right along there, which I would, not real fancy signs, but what you would call monument?
There are some that I think I'd call bulletin board signs.
That would say, I'm trying to picture what they are.
There's one at the building that Margaret Topping used to be in. I've forgotten who's in it now. It's not the, not where the insurance company is. It's a brick building.
Brick building.
Sol and Bloom is right next to the speedway.
Sol and Bloom is a good example.
Yeah.
And that's a monument sign.
Well, and it's a Richland, I had.
And it's, it's unobjectionable.
I have to go look at those things.
Well, that's why I thought, I see that's a great week, because we can talk about this for hours more.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to look again at the things that, that, what's her name gave us the other day? Chris, do you?
From the.
From the bank. The dimensions of their sign.
See what their dimensions are. Okay. But I think this is, this is fine, this is.
Especially for being able to read my head.
I gave you all your notes back. If they weren't translated well, there they are, it's what I had to work with.
Okay, is this our work session? We're just completing here now? All right, we have minutes. Thank you, Steve. You didn't have anything else?
Just one other. This, real quick, real quick.
This is getting like staff meeting.
What is this?
There was some discussion about temporary signage at the last meeting. Just to give you an update on that, I have a new temporary sign permit application that I've created. Officers have been distributing information related to the temporary sign ordinance to businesses, especially we started on East State Street. Eventually, officers will help me do that, because it's impossible for me to cover the whole town and track it. I have actually a new listing now, where any officer can come in and see the date that the permit was pulled for a one-month period, and if it's been renewed for those other three periods of time. It's going to take a little work and a little bit of time to do it, but I think once we get the program up to speed, and there are five or six of us that are always working on the same document, it'll work. Related to that, when we do start looking at that, please take the section out that says, "A zoning administrator may permit balloons that are otherwise prohibited."
If anybody wants to see one go out Columbus Road, because I was there today at WATH, and Taylor Motors has Super Deal Dog out.
I can, what I'll, probably what I'll end up doing is sending them a letter that's similar to the one that I sent to another car dealer. It essentially says, "You can only have that prohibited balloon if you give me an application and I permit it." application and I permit it." So, it's quite a quandary to be in, where people don't want to see them, but the code allows them. If they're, if you get a permit. So, if we don't want those balloons, let's...
So, in, in this document file that you've got for us as to the changeable signs, we need that paragraph where that gets eliminated, added to this package.
Where what then, the?
The balloon business.
The balloons.
Oh, yeah.
Just put it in this package.
Oh, okay, I've got...
As part of this change.
Oh, I'll give you a few other ones.
I'll do.
Do, give us a few of those.
You want to add flapping buttons?
Let's get the signage thing done, because there's probably other things.
I've been discussing, I've talked to Larry Payne, Chamber of Commerce, because I've discussed some things with him about the current temporary sign regulations that he believed were not part of the regulation. If you look at the text at the city website, it says one thing. If you look at the actual language attached to the ordinance, it says something else, which, once I get resolution from the law director's office about which one is in fact what the regulations are, there'll, there'll probably be other concerns raised.
I think it's the ordinance.
The ordinance, everybody knows you can't trust what you see on things, you know, you can't take that, it's gospel. Everybody knows that.
Well, even if it's printed in the code book, I think...